And could we have a determination of a quorum and a roll call, please?
Chairperson Sattler. Vice Chair Boarders.
Here.
Commissioner Aswin.
Here.
Commissioner Mondray.
Here.
Commissioner Salerno.
Here.
Commissioner Stoll.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Commissioner Aswin, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. The public is invited at this time to come on and discuss any topic that is relevant to and within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that is not specifically included in the agenda as an action item. Do there any public comment at this time? Seeing none for possible action approval of the minutes from the March 28th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Any comments or changes?
Just a question.
Commissioner Stoll.
Just a question on the, remember the reconsideration of the special use permit, G3, on page, basically the second paragraph on page five, at the top of page five, where it says Chairperson Sattler was informed that the two current sheds would be removed. I think that might make it sound as if that was part of the amended SUP, but as I remember, in fact, the SUP was to allow them to keep both sheds.
I was just going to ask that as well, because I had questioned that, and I think he said he was using them for storage, et cetera, is the reason he still wanted to keep them up for other items for his property, et cetera.
I'm just going to read the motion to see if there's conflict in the motion.
Mr. Chair, at this point, I think if we just continue the minutes at this point, and we can re-agendize it for your next meeting, so we can clarify and make sure the minutes captured the motion.
Whatever, whatever's the best way to handle it.
If that's okay, just I guess the motion to continue.
I do remember that specifically, that when I asked, they said they wanted to keep them.
I think, as opposed to, the clerk has offered to listen to the tape right now as we meet, but I think it's easier since there is uncertainty to continue if there could be a motion to continue.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue consideration of the minutes until the next meeting.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? We have a second for Commissioner Salon. Our own favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll continue those minutes. Modification of agendas, or any, there's only one item on it, so I don't know that there would be a modification or need for one. So we'll move on to public hearing matter E1, SUP-17-035-02, for popular action to consider a request to amend a special use permit, SUP-17-035, for a 300-unit multifamily project by adding a 3.9-acre parcel to the project site and adding 70 multifamily apartment units, so the yield total of 370 units on property zone multifamily apartment, MFA, and general commercial, GC, located at 400 West Clearview Drive and 3700 South Curry Street, APN 009-051-61 and 62.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The commission may recall that on April 26, 2017, so nearly a year ago, right? April and April, the planning commission approved the Carson Hills Apartments. The approval was for 300 units in 15 buildings with 20 units to a building on 19-acre site. I have on the board and on the front page of your staff report is this exact same map, which shows the new parent track, if you will. The area being added is at the northwest corner of Curry and Clearview. It's a 3.09-acre site. The applicant, you might remember actually that 3.09-acre site, because you looked at a hotel project there, a special use permit for the hotel, and they were going to have it taller than allowed. And I see some of the folks who came out on that hearing are back. So anyhow, the hotel, I guess the land's available, and Carson Hills Apartments is looking to acquire that 3.09 acres and to increase their unit count by 70 units. So we originally approved 300 units. There are no seeking a special use permit for 370 units. The original project size was 19 acres. It's now 22 acres, or they're requesting 22 acres. It was originally 15 buildings. They're now requesting 22 buildings. 91-bedroom units, they're requesting 118 one-bedroom units. 152-bedroom units were permitted. They're requesting 164 two-bedroom units. And on the three-bedroom units, they had originally proposed 60 units, and they are now proposing 88 units. Going back to the site, this site, as I said, is in the northwest corner of Clearview and Curry Street. The surrounding use is to the north is the movie theater, and again, I'm talking about the 3.09-acre site. Across the street is a commercial property. It's a small shopping center with single-family residential to the west of that. To the east, across from Curry Street, is vacant land, but is zoned for general commercial. And to the west is the approved multifamily apartment projects. There are overhead power lines, excuse me, along Clearview that are not proposed to be buried. The applicant is only obligated to bury those lines that service the site. Those lines are there right now. As I mentioned, the applicant is seeking the 370 units, and we reviewed the unit count. In terms of what stays the same and what changes, we're continuing to take access off Curry Street, which is down here, which that was always the plan, as well as access on Clearview. On your plans, you'll see there's actually two access points on Clearview. The lower one, which kind of goes by the clubhouse and the swimming pool to access the balance of the site. And then there's another access point on Clearview west of that site, which the applicant wasn't certain whether they want to be emergency access or full access. The staff is recommending that the approval allow it to be full access, so that's clear going forward. Should there be a desire to make it full access, as opposed to emergency access only, it's not considered a modification to the special use permit. The staff does not see a downside in having it be full access and allowing the traffic that goes onto Clearview to disperse somewhat. Let's see, on building design, so the applicant is proposing a three-story, oh, this came out black and white, sorry about that, three-story apartment building that will utilize fiber cement board and baton siding, stone veneer, wrought iron guardrails along the patio and deck areas, and a concrete roof tile. The property is in the wildland urban interface zone, thus they're subject to certain building codes and certain materials. So that's a bit of a limitation that they have to deal with. The applicant will provide more detail on the building design. When you consider your findings for a special use permit, you have seven required findings of fact. You need to make all seven findings in the affirmative. I'd like to speak to three of those findings. First finding number two, will the use be detrimental to the peaceful enjoyment, economic value, or development surrounding properties of the general neighborhood? This three-acre site, as we just talked about, is next to the movie theater. It's way down on Curry. It's lower in elevation than the existing apartments. And again, we're looking at the modification. The special use permit for the 300 units is approved, and that is a viable project. So the question is, can it increase its number by 70 units, and can it include that 3.09-acre parcel? Again, because it's across from that shopping center, it's across from vacant commercial land, I think it's not the same creature you looked at when you looked at those 300 units. When you looked at those 300 units, we had the residence on Voltaire right there. We were concerned about traffic. You might remember they wanted to take access on Voltaire, and we said no. Bump the buildings back, let the buildings be a buffer between the parking area, and we don't want vehicular access on Voltaire. Move it over to Clearview. That was one of the conditions of approval. Lighting was a concern, and they were required to use the downlighting. We were definitely had a lot of concerns about any conflict with the adjacent single-family residential area. I don't believe those conflicts exist on this 3.09-acre site. Clearly, they'll still need to have the night sky compatible lighting, but I believe the apartments are actually going to buffer this 3.09-acre area from the single-family residential. I also will mention, because this finding talks about the impact on the surrounding properties, the grocery store down the street is calling in saying, when are they building these buildings? They want the customers. They're very excited. So I did want to speak to that, because I think it's a different creature than what you had initially. In terms of impact on vehicular pedestrian traffic, which is finding three, there was a traffic analysis done, and all of the recommendations or mitigations, if you will, of that traffic analysis are incorporated into the conditions of approval, specifically condition of approval 29 and 33. Pedestrian circulation, the very first time we met with this development team, a major project review, both sides of the table were very focused on pedestrian circulation, both because of the amenities that are close by that should be accessible on foot, as well as because of the public lands that are accessible on the perimeter of the property. And we wanted to make sure that pedestrians would still be able to access the trail system. In condition 28, you can see that captures the requirement that improvements along Clearview Drive include markings for a bike lane, as well as curb and gutter and a five-foot sidewalk. So the sidewalk will extend from Voltaire all the way to Curry. Curry already has a sidewalk and a bike lane, so that the folks who live in the apartment complex will be able to walk or bike to various amenities. They will also be able to access the bus stop through a sidewalk system that's located along Curry in front of the movie theater. In terms of finding number four, I want to speak to that. That talks about overburdening existing public services and facilities, including schools, police, fire, water, sanitary sewer, public roads, stormwater, and other public improvements. I did receive an inquiry about any input from the school district. Every single residential project that comes into the city for a discretionary review, I refer to the school district, and I usually sit down with Mark Johnson and Mark Kornick, and we review the project together. That happened on the original 300 units, our part of the special use permit, as well as on the expansion. Our meeting was face-to-face, and it did not generate any formal communication. There are times when those meetings do generate formal communication. I think you saw that to a certain extent with the Lampa project. This one did not generate the formal communication, so you will not see any conditions regarding, you know, student, new students for the schools, or any concerns with the school impacts. I'm not going to speak for the school and say there are no concerns. That's not my place to do that. What I did was I made sure they were aware of the project, and I invited them to review the plans, and I was open to a formal communication, and I would have included that, had there been one, and there was not. So having said that, that kind of concludes my remarks. The staff has reviewed the seven required findings of fact and met them in the affirmative. We are recommending approval. John Kirkpottick is representing the developers team, and he is present, and he will either provide his PowerPoint, or I will.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Tingle?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The first one relates to the traffic study, and I did get some additional information about it, but to presume or assume, whatever, that there will be no impact to traffic with the additional 70 units, I believe, is unrealistic. And perhaps that particular finding needs to be reworded or readdressed, because any time you do any kind of development, there is going to be impact to traffic. So whenever that finding is found in the affirmative that says there will be no impact to traffic, I believe that's a contradiction. So I just, I just don't agree with that particular finding, and I did ask what data they used to make that determination, and I did review it, and it's somewhat confusing if you're not a traffic geek, which I'm sure there are one or two of them in here, and that's fine, but any time you add units and people, there's going to be impact to traffic. My second comment is the non-comment, if you will, from the school district, who did not reach out and respond. Right now, Carson High School is overcrowded to an interesting degree, and I know that, because I have two brothers that currently, one of them currently is a teacher at Carson High. One of them was a teacher at Carson High. The school is crowded. It's overcrowded. The only reason Carson High doesn't address that issue is they don't want to go into a different sports bracket by splitting out the community into two different high schools. So I don't, I don't believe that there can be a positive finding that there won't be any impact to the school population. I think it's remiss of Carson School District to not address these issues when brought to them, and those are my two comments.
Mr. Chair, if I may respond to those. First, on Commissioner Tingle's comments on traffic, I agree with her 100%. There will be an impact. You can't go from vacant land to 70 more units and not have an impact. The finding doesn't ask you if there will be an impact. The finding asks you if there will be a detrimental impact. And so the reason for the traffic study is to understand how the additional traffic will impact levels of service, as well as safety issues, and so on. And there are certain standards. Our engineering department and our transportation department have that transportation engineer who's privately hired, but is an expert in transportation and traffic, which is why when you looked at that, you might have been like, wow, what is all this? But I get it. I usually look at my executive summary to see what their recommendations are. But we, first, our technical folks, the guys across the table from me in our engineering division, as well as our traffic department, which doesn't always come to these meetings, but they sometimes do, they'll come if they're very concerned about traffic. They'll review those reports. They may reject the report. They may say, no, we don't agree with your assumptions. These are wrong. Or they can even ask for a peer review if they think it's far enough off, or they may say, you know, this assumption's a little aggressive. You should change this assumption. We want to see the impacts based on a more conservative assumption, or so on and so forth. In this case, the traffic report that was ultimately accepted by our engineering staff and commented on, I can't say it was the first draft. They may have had back and forth with the traffic engineer, but the traffic report that they ultimately agreed was a sound report, did have mitigations in it, and those mitigations were necessary, not because of the impacts, but because of potentially detrimental impacts. And the conditions of approval try to capture, or they don't try to, they do include those mitigations to try to avoid detrimental impact.
And weren't they probably considering, we had already approved a possible hotel there, the traffic, that that would be affected, correct? So would that have been included in that, and there's no?
The Lee Plemmle Community Development Director, probably not, because they're focused on this, so it's not comparing, trying not to compare apples to oranges. But I also wanted to add to the traffic impacts that transportation, not only, they planned for build-out, so they're not only planning the system for the next house that comes in, they're planning it for build-out of the community, and they have a transportation plan that looks out 15 and 20 years. So I think part of it is reviewing it within that context.
On the school district, interesting, I knew I had two commissioners looking out for the school district. I didn't know I had three. Okay, I do, and maybe even four, actually. But I have, because having sat with you and sitting with the board of supervisors is very clear, and I'm looking at Elise Monroy, because Elise, for two years now...
It's been my soapbox for two years.
It has been her soapbox. So there is no way I was ever coming before this board without consulting with the school district, because I knew the question was coming up. And based on the follow-up, now that I have four of you watching, no, just kidding. But anyway, I talked to the school district today, and what we discussed was not just that we should have a staff-to-staff consultation, but we should probably have the school district preparing some type of formal communication, so that you all have that level of understanding of where they're coming from, as opposed to a non-answer, as you put it. And so...
We discussed that when we did the Lampa, and the school district was here, is the fact that we would like to see more input from them.
So to add to that, too, sorry, Hope, but the, so growth management, so we have growth management next month, and that's where you allocate the number of residential units that are permitted in a given year. That is when the school district weighs in, so they, when they say they are comfortable with 600 new residential units in the next year, I mean, I think it's great that they need to review and comment on individual projects as they come along. They're usually, comments on individual projects are related to the needs for bus stops, where that is, but it would be inappropriate for this board to say, we're not going to approve, unless the school district does something about the current state, and then we're not going to approve any residential units, because I would just say they have approved 650 residential units for this current calendar year.
If I might, despite those two issues, as far as the detrimental impact to traffic, I think detrimental needs to be defined, and the school district impact, there's one other area that has never been addressed by us, which is probably outside of our purview, but I think needs to be addressed, and that is access to health care. There is a nationwide primary care provider shortage. In Carson City, it's very pronounced. There is a group meeting about how to increase access to medical care. Every time a new development is approved and new people come to this community, the access to health care diminishes, and with that provider shortage, and I don't know if you've reached out to Carson Tahoe Health, but I believe that at some point in time, they need to be part of this discussion, because with additional people in the community, the access to health care decreases considerably any time you want to go in and see your primary care provider, and it takes you three to four months to get an appointment. I think that's something that Carson Tahoe Health needs to be a part of these discussions when we have that.
And we reach out to them for growth management as well, yeah.
But again, that's outside the, we cannot vote something down, because they can't see a doctor. I mean...
Thank you. Elise Monroy, for the record. So I had a quick comment, but now I'm going to pontificate a little bit. So, Hope, thank you for hearing our concerns, our collective concerns about the school district, and looking at the high school specifically, and looking at how that can be brought into all of our considerations. So I appreciate that. I think that as we're talking about access to health care and things like that, not really in our purview, but as we as planners and you as planners are looking at how the region is going to develop, I'm always interested to see how agencies within state government and city government can work collaboratively and across kind of the aisle. How can we, how can our planners work with our health, our health care leadership at the state level, whether that be public health, Medicaid, or things like that, to address access issues, because they are significant? So that ends my soapbox. I had questions, though, about the conditions before we hear from the applicant. I think that since my time, I don't know, since in my time that I've been here, that we've had an approval and then gone back to make a change or an addition. So I have, oh, I don't remember, but I have questions about the conditions for approval. So are these 50-some, 50, 61 conditions that we have in front of us, the same conditions from the first SUP? If so, I don't see, and pointed out to me if I've missed it, the dark sky or the downlight requirements, which were part of the 300. And then I had a really persnickety question about 55. This is the Parks and Recs Master Plan Neighborhood Park, and I had a question about why that was in here, because all of the other recommendations or conditions seem to be very affirmative. The applicant will do this, the applicant will do this, and that one's not. So I just was wondering about those things. Thank you.
I'll take 55 first. The Parks Master, the Parks Master Plan makes some statements. And, and so when the Parks Department gives me their comments or their conditions of approval, they will sometimes incorporate those statements into those conditions of approval. So what I can do going forward is try to extract those and put them into the narrative, so that it's, because you're right, it's not an action item. So that was a fair comment, and I think what I need to do is just edit it a little bit and put it and include in the communication, but not in the conditions of approval. In terms of the dark sky compatible lighting, that's a code requirement. So you can be silent in the conditions of approval, because the municipal code requires it.
One question, just to clarify, under the findings two, those top three apartments buildings on the far end above these were part of the original, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So those three are, were going to be there anyway, between the housing, and it's covered in three, that the approved apartments are located between the expansion and the single family?
Right. And you may recall that what they had, what you had reviewed back in April 2017, included those three apartment buildings with a road behind it, and I believe the parking behind it as well.
Right, right.
And you all advised the developer to flip-flop them.
Right, right.
So the buildings would be, serve as a buffer to the vehicles, and you also prohibited the access onto Voltaire.
Right. And that also, then, if the hotel went in, would be in front of those apartments where these buildings are.
Right. The hotel is down on Curry. Well, the hotel site's the site we're talking about, but that's on Curry. that's on Curry.
Great.
I'll save a comment about the school district after the presentation, but I would appreciate just understanding a little better in terms of access to the bus stop on Curry Street, in terms of people having to walk all the way around that development in order to get to that bus stop, if there's not some shorter route to get to the bus stop, whether it's cutting through Fandango, whether they would actually be able to do that instead of having to go all the way around on both ends. And then also, in terms of if somebody has a disability, are they going to actually be able to, if they are in a wheelchair, to get to that bus stop, in terms of those grades on that property? Thanks.
Stephen with Carson City Development Engineering for the record. So as far as the ADA requirements for multifamily properties, they're required to have accessible slopes from the handicap parking to the accessible units, not necessarily to any specific streets. And, but the sidewalk improvements along the streets do have to meet specific slope requirements. And then as far as the distance, on the original project, that is something that we were concerned with, at least with pedestrians in general, we created a shortcut over on the north side of the project, moving down so they wouldn't have to go all the way to the entrance by Coons. But on this portion, we felt that they were close enough, considering you have the entrance on the east side, and then the emergency access on the west side will also serve for the trail, so pedestrians can go through there to Clearview. Do you have a laser pointer? It's a long distance right there. Yeah. So this is the proposed emergency or potentially full access, which will be used for trail. So pedestrians can come from here out to Clearview, to the city sidewalk and down, and from these units, they can come out this way or up to here. So it is a distance, I think the bus stop is in this area, if I remember correctly?
Yes. More by the movie theater.
Further here.
Mr. Chair, if the commissioners have their plans set, if you look on page S1, S1, so the second page, in the section area marked as S1, and this is really kind of an orientation map, you'll see a proposed stair, I'll give you a minute to get there, connecting near Building G down to Curry Street. It's not, it can be ADA accessible. And then if you go to page S2, you can see a blow up of that stair, and it's marked as number 10. Now, having said that, we do have a condition of approval that the stairs will not be allowed in the right-of-way. So that may be something the commission wants to discuss, because the right-of-way is the city's right-of-way, so is it more important to provide, you know, easier access to the, to the bus stop, albeit it certainly would not be ADA access because of the slopes? So I just wanted to point that out to you, and I can find the condition number that prohibits the stair in the right-of-way. Just let them go.
I'm Clint Tisi with Summit Engineering. I just wanted to give a clarification regarding the stairway. The, we actually have a landing, a flat landing to the sidewalk within the right-of-way area, and the stairs are all located within private property.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Clint.
And I believe one of the conditions was, with the sidewalks, et cetera, there couldn't be any stairs or anything on those as well, correct, I believe? Or one of the, it was in there somewhere, about nothing on the sidewalks or whatever, they had to all be smooth and flat, whatever.
So I think in terms of access to a bus stop is a long way, 100% is a long way. It's tricky, because the bus stop is right in front of a property that this applicant does not control. It is on Curry, but we are doing the best we can to encourage pedestrian access and work within the slopes that are just there. And we can't make those go away to create the, an easy ADA accessible, but it will be ADA accessible. Stephen is always looking at sidewalks and all the various slopes to ensure that.
Okay, for the developer, I guess before your presentation, have you seen the recommended conditions of approval, and they're acceptable to you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, they are. We've reviewed all of them, and they're acceptable. That's right. Thank you. Are you ready for, I'm not sure, give me a little direction here in terms of managing the hearing, because I had my own response to some of the commissioner questions. Do you want me to fire away at those, or do you want me to do our PowerPoint and, or do you?
Let's do the PowerPoint.
Okay.
We'll address the questions.
Thank you.
That may answer some of them as well.
Okay. Actually, you know, Hope stole the thunder for most of this, so I'm going to be a bit redundant, but I'm not going to take a lot of your time. Here's our cover sheet, just by way of introduction. Paul Fraga is a project architect with CW Architects, CWX Architects. My name is John Krompotic with KLS Planning in Reno. Clint Tisi introduced himself, a civil engineer with quite a bit of experience. And we're all working for the gentleman right here in the second row, Craig Knutson with Tanamira Construction and Development. Kind of odd lighting there, can, is there any way to, hopefully everybody can see that okay, but-
They have your application package?
They do.
So they have this plan?
They have this plan, but they don't have this PowerPoint, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So quickly, so there's the site defined, you can see the three-acre ad on the south end. Interesting to look at, and Hope touched on, you know, a lot going on here topographically, and then transition from commercial to what is fairly low residential from one side of the site to the other. It's just the nature of the beast in this case. And I think it's also explained by a way of pointing out the city zoning map, that we have split zoning through the property, which is a little bit different. It's okay. That drives the need for this use permit in both the GC zone and the MFA zone, which is multifamily apartments. And then you can see the dominance of GC to the east, and the transition to lower-density residential to the west and south. Here is the old project, I just want to get, I noticed, I believe there are three new commissioners since we presented this almost one year to the day last year, and that was the old site plan with 300 units on the 19 acres. And then, of course, at that time, the hotel site was approved almost, right around the same time. I'm not sure if it was a meeting or two before or after we were in here. And we're fortunate to gain your support. So there is a summary of changes. I can hardly read my own font now, on the upper left there, but in terms of the project summary revisions, we're adding the 50 units on the south outlined in the yellow box on the south end. The relocating of the clubhouse to the south end is key. That's actually strategic on behalf of this developer. And then revise the driveways, that is a benefit, I think, clearly, because it does allow for better distribution of access and traffic on Clearview at two points. Also gives the developer the flexibility on that westernmost one to either have it as emergency or full. And certainly, less traffic over there would be favorable to the citizens over there on the wraparound on that west, southwest corner of the property. And then the other is replacing the old clubhouse in the smaller rectangle to the north with another 20-unit building. You see, I've noted the mix of units at 32%, 44% on two-bedroom, and 24% on three. There's a slight variation there. Of course, that's market-driven. We actually reduced the one-bedroom percentage a little bit from the numbers that Hope went over, and then increased to bedroom supply. In terms of density, it's 16.7 dwellings per acre on gross density. The allowed density in this area ranges from 28 to 36 dwellings per acre. You might wonder why we're only using 60% of zoning capacity. Well, it's really because of the topography. It's just very inefficient land, and it is what it is. So there's, you know, isolating the site plan and landscape plan in a little more detail. We do have a nice park enhancement in the middle of the panhandle area there with playground and so on. Here's a zoom of the focus of the amendment area, which is, again, the 50 units, the clubhouse, a parking area, and then just north of the pool there, you kind of see a maintenance, a maintenance garage, a maintenance shed, and restrooms and so on that are amenities to that area. The, again, the driveway at that location, I think, serves better purpose to the public and to the project and distribution of traffic. Here is probably, and one commissioner already touched on this, I think this is the most important thing that I can share with you. I think in terms of our responsibility to deliver a good project, you always think about circulation for the public and for the citizens, the tenants in this, in this project. You do have, you know, 370 units, it's significant population, say 750 people or so. And so, you know, you think about circulation and the modes of transportation that are going on here. We have those bus shelters that you talked about on Curry Street. There are bike lanes on Curry Street, and you see my orange lines there that show kind of the connectivity. We have important, in our discussions with staff the first go-around, which you look at the north portion of the site, parking for trail access, that will be signed as such, we accepted that condition, and then having a good public easement that allows people to park there and make their way into the public lands to the west of the property. I think that's really important to allow for that, and it seems like we have a pretty good circulation element there. You can see that orange line kind of extends on the sidewalk through the heart of the fat part of the property, and then I see that, you know, right in the middle of the panhandle there, where we make the connection to the public land. Similarly, going south, you have a connection that gets us a legal easement over to Voltaire, so there's a connection over there, it's a little bit faint on the orange line, and then also through the property en route to Clearview. And then, of course, we have the condition that requires bike lanes and half-street improvements on Clearview, so you also have that street, that bike lane element and sidewalk on Clearview there for the stretch of the property. Hope touched on this, I wanted to show this, but it's got, I think, we have enhanced, of course, this is very much in the eye of the beholder, and there is no right or wrong as much as we have very strong opinions about architecture. But in my mind, that's the old one, and there's the new, and I think we have a little bit more going on architecturally to add some interest into these units between what was approved, that's what was, and that is what we have proposed and accepted for this project. There is the clubhouse, that's what you would see facing Clearview Lane. It's got a fairly nice residential feel, which is, of course, driven by the developer to produce that type of feel, not to put off to neighbors across the street. I think it also, it's frankly, it's a better fit for the general area than what was the hotel at that site. In terms of views, they are very nice, and I just wanted to touch on those quickly. That's at the northwest corner facing east, you're looking right down Coons there, so you can imagine, right at the northwest corner of the property. And then same location facing southeast, simply shows that it commands some gorgeous views looking into the valley to the east. And then there is Voltaire on the Upper Voto. We talked about pedestrian access going up there toward the end of the street, into the site, and then similarly on Clearview on the Lower Voto, which then, of course, will be all improved with city improvements. I wanted to touch on Commissioner Tingle started with traffic, and I think it's absolutely fair for her to say, and I think we have some responsibility to deal with this, I am not a traffic engineer, but I've been doing this a long time, and I think I know enough about it to discuss it with some responsibility. Looking at the traffic analysis with the initial project and then the addition, we did not take credit for comparing this to the hotel. So just looking at raw land and 370 multifamily units, and looking at level of service standards, and in only one case did the project lower the level of service, which is at the corner, which is at the intersection of Curry and Coons, from level of service A to B in the current condition. If you go to the long-term planning condition of 2040, with the project or without, it doesn't change it. That was the biggest thing that you could take from the traffic report. Also studied Curry and Clearview, it operates at level of service A in 2040 with or without the project. So something is going on to suggest there's a lot of capacity on those surrounding streets, and that it operates very well. We didn't hear anything from your engineering staff to suggest otherwise on our traffic report. And then, of course, the Clearview driveway, because there's a lot going on on Clearview in terms of our traffic in connection to that street, and it also operates at level of service A from our traffic engineer, who was Paul Slegi in year 2040. Hopefully, that addresses some of your concerns, but no question, there's always impact. The question is, you know, in traffic, you have standards, and we're at a very high level of service on meeting those standards. School impact, I have no perspective, because I don't know, we didn't hear from the school district on this. And hopefully, my one slide addressed one of the commissioners' questions about circulation on the bus stop. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions the commission would have. Also, Clint Tisi, on behalf of the engineering questions, thank you very much.
Questions for the applicant?
Thank you. The location of the pool and rec area is at the extreme south end of the site, and it's about a quarter of a mile from the most northerly end of the site to the southerly location. Why did you locate the rec center at the end, rather than somewhere in the center?
It didn't fit in the center, right? So the trade-off was the topography and the activities a lot more intense on the south end of the site. The topography is much more favorable. You can see that zigzag circulation line where we had it before, and you see how tough it was to get there to make the grades work. So for that to be kind of a centerpiece of a project with very constrained topographic access was part of the equation. Anything that you might want to add, Craig?
Typically, a clubhouse or-
Can you take down the mic and-
Craig Knutson, Tanamira-
Oh.
It's on, it's on.
Can I introduce yourself?
Yeah, yes. Craig Knutson with Tanamira Construction, the developer of the project. Typically, in an apartment complex, you want to have access to the clubhouse at the entry, because you have leasing, people wanting to lease the units and things like that. You want them driving through the project, not knowing where they're going. So it's more of a management standpoint on that. And then also, when the owners purchase that, the original clubhouse, which is up, or this is the parking for the trailhead access, was very constrained with the topography, and they really couldn't get a big enough clubhouse for the number of units that were there, so that was constrained. And when this property came available, I gave them the ability to expand the clubhouse and make it more conducive to the size of the project with 300 units, and also a larger pool and deck area for the recreational. And then also, in the new phase of the 70 units, we have another open space area there that we're going to create a dog park in that area. So we actually created some more open space in that, that three acres that they purchased. So we actually created some more open space in that three acres that they purchased. One more thing, it is, the panhandle access is not going to be emergency, it's going to be a full access.
We haven't seen the floor plans, but will the apartments have laundry facilities, or is there going to be, are all the laundry facilities in a different area?
Craig Knutson with Tanmer Construction, I'll act as the architect also. Each unit has their own internal laundry facilities, and then they'll also have carports for the units and things like that.
Questions, Chris?
John referred to the park area in the middle of the plan as a panhandle, and you just said the panhandle won't be emergency only. Are you talking about the emergency, the western drive on Clearview?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, because we do have that emergency access on Voltaire that will remain a gated emergency access only.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Solano?
Where will the electric lines not be buried? Is that along the westerly border only?
Yeah, there's an existing transmission line along Clearview that goes up into a substation, I believe. And we did actually have a conversation with NV Energy, and there's some huge regulators that are right on the corner that we were trying to do something with, and they cannot bury those regulators there, so that line that goes up Clearview heading west will stay. Internally, all the electrical will be undergrounded on our project. I believe there's a service line that's on Voltaire that's not on our property that goes up to some existing homes along Voltaire.
Thank you. One other question, we had a fire not too long ago on the west side of the property, just slightly above the property. The fire department, have they required, and I should have looked at the plans closer, are there hydrants along that westerly borderline that are, that would be there in case there's a fire?
There are fire hydrants existing within the project itself. Typically, when they have wildland fires, they have tankers that would go up into those areas, they don't typically have fire hydrants that are accessed up into the DLM land per se, but there are fire hydrants on the road that is in our project, paralleling the DLM land.
So they're within reason, they're fairly close?
Yeah, they could access that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then there is also, I think, an existing fire hydrant at the intersection of Clearview and Voltaire right now.
Any other questions? Bring it back for...
At this point, just to open it up.
Open it up for public comment, if you'd like to come forward, state your name, and with your comment, we'd be appreciative.
There is no sign-in sheet here, I'm Jeanne Vondiette, owner of the property immediately southwest of the property. And I have a number of concerns. First of all, if someone could put up the original, your opening page that was part of, the little green that showed the site, it was just green and gray. Actually, the one that was the only thing available to the public online. Or that will work, although the green one...
I'm going to give you the one you want.
Okay. If you look at the extreme north end of their project, you'll see a little road that says dirt, dirt, dirt. That is U.S. Forest Service Road 41710. It's a loop that goes up and around, goes to the west, then comes to the south, and then comes down Voltaire Canyon. That's all the 41710. And when I look at their plans, that road's about the line of buildings coming down from the north, it's between about the third and fourth building. And at present, just looking over there, because I live over there, and kind of watching what they're doing, they've now cut that road into a cliff, and that road is both recreational access and I'm sure Forest Service wildfire access. As I said, there's fires up there, it actually burned part of their property too. The waterfall fire came across that ridge, and they used that road to access to fight it and kept it from impacting our house. So I'm concerned about how does the public get to that north end of 41710? No, I have lots more. Do you want me to say everything all at once, and then you're going to address it all, or? Okay.
Just state your concerns, and then we'll answer and address them after you're finished.
Okay. I thought the architecture looked better before. Dust when they cut through the western Clearview entrance, that's what they're now using for their construction haul road, and in the rains last month, the dirt washed off of their property onto Clearview. And we have asked the city to come clean it up, and they've sent the street sweeper out, and it doesn't even touch Clearview. We've contacted the project, and finally, just yesterday, one time, they ran the water truck on Clearview, but I'm getting tired of listening to my husband complain about the coating of dust on our solar panels. And because they are driving just truck after truck after truck up that, it's constant six days a week. So the dust, I don't know if the city has to take care of all the dirt that's washed off of the property onto Clearview, or if they will keep running the trucks, or what they're going to do, but that kind of chip-sealed road is now a dirt road because of the dirt that washed off of their property onto it. I realize eventually, it will be paved and sidewalks and bicycle lanes, but right now, it's seriously impacting our property. It says rec is available to, the recreation they are providing there is available to only their residents, but I believe Parks and Rec had found the need for some kind of recreational facility on the west side of Curry's, I mean, 39550 there. And now they're saying that since they're providing recreation to their residents, they don't need to provide it to the rest of the neighborhoods on that west side, which is the Carson Indian Colony and the rest of us, so they are taking away a park that would be open to the public, saying since they're providing recreation to their residents only, that's okay. Don't like that. Stormwater, they are supposed to deal with water on Voltaire Street. Well, first of all, looking at the project, they have a culvert into a, looks like it's going to be a retention basin and box culverts on a dry ravine. I've been there 30 years and have never seen any water there, other neighbors that have been there for 50 years have never seen any water come down the ravine where you have the culvert leading into the drainage. Where the water on Voltaire Street comes from is Voltaire Canyon Road. And they don't, I don't see how they've tied in to deal with the water that comes onto Voltaire Street. It's an alluvial fan. The city has just spent hours in hauling dirt up there to replace the dirt that has washed down, and it now has the end of Voltaire Street buried under at least three feet of sand. And I figure it'll keep coming down that way. So the, one, their plans dealing with it on a dry ravine don't make sense when they don't seem to be addressing the water that will come down the canyon onto Voltaire Street. They build a causeway kind of across the ditch that's there, the culvert that went under Voltaire Street is totally filled with sand, just to let you know that a lot of water and a lot of sand has come down and has potential to continue coming down to that area. And then, just to let you know, at 6:45 in the morning, six days a week, we are, the backup beepers start, the trucks are parked on Clearview, diesel engines rumbling, and, I mean, it's noisy now, and we haven't even opened up the windows at night yet. We don't have air conditioning, we're one of those older houses that opens up our windows at night. 6:45, six days a week is awful early start. I think that's everything I had.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm John Hamlin, and my husband has owned, or his family has owned property in the neighborhood for 50 years, and so this does affect us, but I realize that I'm a year too late to voice concern, so I just want to say Jeannie covered some of mine. And I do have concerns about safety going up the canyon, all that many more people, I think there will be accidents and crime, you know, because maybe the people, I'm sure it's going to be a nice place, but you know, they might be lower income, that's a lot of extra people, you know, in the neighborhood, and so, anyway, I doubt that any one of you would be happy to have it in your neighborhood, and I just hope that we'll have some property value left to sell and get out of there. Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment? Board, commission, any more questions or comments? Commissioner Solano?
I have a question for the developer. You've got two different styles of architecture, you've got one on the previous design and a different one for the current. Is that the case, or is, will it be all one or the other?
It's going to be Craig Knutson, again, Tanmer Construction. We've elected to use a non-famable siding, like C-Max, I believe it is, I deal with more of the land than I do the vertical, but in lieu of the stucco, we wanted to go with a siding because it gives us better texture and differentials to the architecture than what is typically being used right now. So, yeah, all the buildings will be of that siding, not the stucco.
So the latest design will be the one?
Yes.
Don't like it quite as well as the original, but it certainly looks attractive with the revision.
Yeah, the slides give a good representation of the colors, the slides seem to be coming out more of a gray, black, and white, so they will have more differential to colors and things like that, and texture.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boarder?
Is that, excuse me, is that material something I'd call hardy blank?
Yes.
Okay. It's very fire resistant, I love it.
Commissioner Tingle?
The lady that just spoke brought up a good point as far as, is there any low-income, what, has any low-income locations been set aside? So knowing that there is a huge shortage of low-income housing in this community, was there any plan to set aside any of the units as far as low-income housing, or is that not an option here?
Lee Plam, Community Development, I thought I heard a second question at the end there, because your question was, are we, are we the city setting aside an area for affordable housing? The answer to that's no, we want to integrate it for affordable housing into other projects and properties around the city.
Yeah, it wasn't a question for the city, it was more a question for these gentlemen.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
This is market rate multifamily housing. The answer is no. Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Stowe?
I think, I know, Lee, you said, you know, you're going to have the growth management discussion, and the school district normally attends those meetings, but I really think that it's appropriate for the school district to be on the record in terms of stating what the expected student generation's going to be for these developments, because you've got two issues going on. One are the discretionary approvals, but you also have lots of residential units that are coming online that are not coming to the planning commission. These are as-of-right multifamily, single-family that's going on every day. So, and in terms of what the growth limit is per year, all of these are all coming online in the last two years, and without knowing what the school district says for student generation, I just pulled some student generation rates from Montgomery County, Maryland, and based on multifamily development, you could have, you know, approximately 150 students coming out of just this one development. And the issue in terms of affordable housing is that as families are coming into the city, they can't afford single families, so you are going to probably get more families going into the apartments than you would normally. So I would expect that you're going to get more than 150 students coming out of this. It's zoned for Borderwick Bray Elementary, as well as Carson Middle School, and so I think it's appropriate for us to ask the school district, it's not to say that we're going to stop these projects, you know, Carson City doesn't have concurrency requirements, we don't, we don't stop developments, but I think we need to have that information for us. It is an impact on the school system, and I think the school district needs to tell us what they expect the student generation rate will be coming out of these developments, so we are aware of it, and they're aware of it, and everybody's aware of it. It's just basic information that I think we, as a planning commission, need to have provided for us for these, for these developments. It's not to, it's not to say that I would oppose this, we need more multifamily, but I think we also need to really and truly know what the school impacts are going to be. Thanks.
Can I answer that, or are you still talking about schools?
Talk about schools also, same, probably what you're going to say.
Yeah, on the rate generation, so first of all, they are studying that, and they actually just recently got, recently being the last couple of months, got the city's GIS data, and they have somebody working on that very thing to find out what the rates are. Their preliminary numbers are far less than that, I will say, and it's actually, they've, in Carson City, the multifamily generates much fewer residents, much fewer school-age kids per 100 units than single-family detached. I don't have, I don't have the numbers, I know it's way less than 50% of the units that generate kids, from what they've told me so far, but with growth management coming up and their opportunity to participate, I'll make sure that they include that information to you, so I have a note of that. Thank you.
And we're basically looking at adding 70 units, we'd already approved 300, so and...
And as pointed out, most of these units are in multifamily that are in an area where they wouldn't need even special use permit approval. The only reason it's here is because there's a very small portion of this, that mostly the clubhouse that's in general commercial.
Two comments?
Go ahead, Commissioner Boarder.
One, as far as the school is concerned, I know about a year ago, we did get their growth projections from the school, not only for Lampa, but for the whole school district itself, and where they have looked at all the potential growth areas and tried to predict numbers of students, and in their mind, they're adequate. And I, the difficulty I see us doing is trying to legislate to them what should be in their mind when they've already done it and said, no, it's okay. So, does that make any sense? You fawned at me.
I would say it would make sense if this, Carson High School wasn't already overcrowded. I would understand that totally, but I don't.
But that's, if you ask the school... But that's, if, if you ask the school district, they're not gonna tell you that. So we have to start somewhere. And if, if, if the school has looked at the potential growth rates over the next 10 years, and the impact on all their schools, and the last bond issue went to meet those demands in all the schools in, in the community, we have to, we have to take a certain amount of faith in the fact that what they're doing is right and proper also. So if they don't, I agree with, with Lee that we have to keep on them. And certainly next month is, it would be a good time to, to vent our frustrations with them. But I, I don't think we can run the school district, and I don't think we should. And, and the other, the other question is, and I'm, I've wrestled back and forth with this a little bit. For example, if we did not approve this permit tonight, if we didn't approve it at all, they're still gonna build 300 units. And presumably, they're gonna look like the new unit that they've designed, not the old unit. But, you know, we could, we could probably argue about that. But they're gonna design and build these 300 units. We've already crossed that bridge. It's the question of, all right, now, they're asking us to approve some more, all right? And we've asked them to do some other things to get that approval. So in this horse trade that we're working on, the question is if we horse traded enough or not enough, and that's for us to decide. And if we put another restriction on this development for something we feel strongly about, and they accept it, then we, we got a little piece. If they don't accept it, then we have to figure out why we don't. But I think, I think what we've got to stay focused on the fact is that we've already approved the majority of this project. We're just looking at the, at those bottom three acres and the redesign and how it will affect everything we're doing and not just the whole project, so.
Commissioner Tingle?
I was not part of that planning commission that approved those 300 units, just to get that out of the way. I'm not expecting the developer, nor the engineers, nor any of these folks here to resolve the issue as far as the school district is concerned. I think it is something that we need to keep in our minds. I also think the healthcare issue is something we need to keep in our minds. We don't have any control over that. I don't know if that is an issue or a consideration that we need to look at when we look at approving future developments. But we cannot turn a blind eye to the fact that there are subsequent issues related to any development that is done in this community related to school district or healthcare. Those are items that I believe somebody needs to be looking at. If it's not us, it needs to be somebody, instead of waiting until it is at a crisis point, or at a point where healthcare turns to, to something that is not accessible, not affordable. And that's just my own personal opinion. I'm very passionate about that because I work in healthcare. And I've lived here a long time, and I've seen a lot of changes. And I just feel very passionate about those two items. So I, I don't anticipate that it's gonna change anything, but I think it's something that we all need to keep in mind, all of us in this room, for future decisions that we make. And whatever this commission decides is what's going to go forward, and that's fine. But I just think that we are doing ourselves and the community a disservice if we don't consider those items when they're brought to us.
And my comments would be that, looking what's been done, what's been brought to us, we had approved a hotel in that area, possibly. I think this is a nice use of that land, if the hotel's not gonna be there. Again, it, it's brought some redesigns and different things to their, that they've changed that I think is advantageous in some ways, and fire safety, et cetera, et cetera, access, better roads on Clearview, and better access there, et cetera. And we're looking at putting 50 more units where a hotel was gonna be, along with a pool and a clubhouse, and 20 units, not 70 there, 20 are gonna go where the old clubhouse was gonna be. So if the, wanna leave it blank, or, and whatever, I mean, if it's not gonna be a hotel or develop some other way, I think it's an excellent use of the land. So that's my comment.
I have a question. Okay. Elise Monroy for the record, really quick. So the redesign, I, I like it. I think.
The building?
The building, yeah. I think they're modern. But for clarity of the record and what we're considering, I don't see information about the redesign in the application, just that there, it references, the, the index references, like redesign information. So architect plans set for, but I don't see where.
So you didn't get the.
Yeah, so we didn't get that part.
We didn't get the elevations.
I, I guess.
But we're not design review either. That's not what we're here for.
Oh, okay. Well, then why do we approve it?
Well, it's just they brought, they brought that to us as the changes they made, but that's not what we're, we're approving the complex and the development. We're not approving the design of the building.
So we're not approving the redesign today?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay. Because we talked about the redesign, so I just wanted to make sure, for clarity of the record, that's not something we're considering today.
That's, that's up to them, to what's, whatever, you know, it's, it's, that's, they're just sharing that with us.
Mr. Chairman, may I, did you get, so you guys didn't get in your packet the elevations? Okay, so we had that as part of, I think you pointed out.
Yeah, it looks like it's supposed to be here, but I'm just doing make it in.
Was that our fault?
Well, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm glad you.
Okay, fair enough, yeah. I, I know for a fact that we included elevations in the application, but maybe it was just a couple copies.
Right, it was in the application. It looks like when you brought in the 15 copies, and we didn't, we didn't quality control the 15 copies. So that's the difference.
Wow, I'm sorry to hear that.
But then again, not, Elise Monroy for the record, not what we're voting on, right? We just referenced.
We're voting on changing that three acres from a hotel use to a pool clubhouse and 50 units.
Okay.
But just on that, on that point, the, the development standards have design compatibility, and that's all part of it. So I, I don't think, I don't think we're, we're saying that we have no review of design standards here, are we?
Well, I think that's a question for staff to answer, but, but for me, as long as the condition says that they have to meet the development standards, then, which they do, then we can't dictate the actual specifics of the design.
Commissioner Scott?
I think that, you know, we've already got 300 units that are under construction. They're grading, they're getting ready. This is an addition of another 70 units total, so we'll be at 370 units. And previously, we, on this particular site that we're looking at, the new area, there was a hotel that we had previously designed at a higher density than 70 units. I don't remember what the density was, but I think it was 100 or more, 100 or more units. So that's gone. And now we're gonna have one unified project, I think, that's going to tie in with, one end with the other end. And just looking at it, I think it'll be a very nice project. And so I would like to make a motion, if I may.
Just to, just to check for cases, any further discussion?
Sorry. The, the hotel was approved. And the change, I, I don't disagree with the change, but there, it's comparing apples and oranges. When you have a hotel, you have transient people. People are here for two days and gone. So there's no impact to your school districts, there's no impact to your long-term services, your, so I think they're, they're two different animals entirely, and so just wanted to get that.
One other thing, if I could, for, just from the questions from the public, what is the hours of operation normally allowed for construction or whatever, staff?
I'm sorry?
I was just, the, the public comment brought up the fact that at 6:45, or six days a week, I mean, what, are there hour limits, or are the hours set for construction on that?
I heard a couple comments, actually. The dust and erosion control issues are also operational issues. And we do have the contractor here, Craig Knutson. And so I think we can either speak to it in a public forum, or right after the meeting, maybe our engineering staff and Craig and, and the folks on Voltaire can just sit down and make sure we understand the rules regarding dust control, erosion control, and, and hours of operation.
Do we know what they, were their hours set for this, or is there staying, I thought there were.
I don't see, I thought there were too, but I don't see them in the conditions of approval. It's usually a 7:00 AM start.
It's 7:00 AM.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There were some comments made by the public. Would you like staff, for the benefit of the record, to just respond to a few of those?
I appreciate that.
Okay. In terms of the recreational access to public lands, that's actually was a big deal with the 300 units. And if you look at Condition 49, you'll see they're required to provide public access in perpetuity for parking lots, stalls, and a sidewalk system has to be made a public access easement to allow the public to continue to have access to those public lands. So the recreational access has been preserved as part of the proposed conditions of approval, actually, the accepted conditions of approval of the 300 units.
Excuse me, but wouldn't that, didn't it include that dirt, access to that dirt road area going through the property?
Yeah, correct. Okay.
Yeah, I, that, that's what I wanted to bring up too, because they have to be able to come through and be able to get to that road.
Sorry. In terms of fire access, you'll recall when Craig Knutson was up, I questioned him about the emergency access going onto Voltaire to, because that's a gated area, and that's there purely for fire access. In fact, the fire marshal, as I recall when we were looking at the 300 units, was trying to figure out if there was a way to access those public lands from the north, but that's the tribal property, and trying to improve access. But access to those lands was a big priority to the fire marshal, and he, right, and he reviewed it very carefully on this project to ensure that he was protecting that access. In terms of the lack of a park, I'm not, I'm not really certain what that is, but they are providing amenities as required on the site. In fact, we're requiring through Condition 8 that the pool and the clubhouse are constructed before the second apartment building to ensure that recreational amenities are provided to the residents, and that it doesn't get delayed to an extent that we get a bunch of units and a bunch of residents and no recreational amenities. We also will be collecting the residential construction tax of $1,000 per unit. That's Condition 54, and that would be required even if it was not mentioned. We have Condition 49, which talks about relocating the trailhead access and the various, making access available to the public. Condition 50, which is clear that all private amenities, the clubhouse, the parking lot, and so on and so forth, are spent, paid for with private monies. And Condition 51 requires that the applicant put up signage to public trails, so that the public can find the trail system. So the Parks and Recreation Department was very careful to make sure there was no loss of access to recreational amenities. In terms of the stormwater, I know that, there was a lot of meetings on that, and I'll have Stephen speak to it, because it's fairly technical.
And Condition 35 mentions that the must drain, drain to the city facilities, the southern portion of the property currently drains towards the parcels to the east, so that's gonna be corrected, correct?
I didn't hear that last part. If you would repeat.
That was another improvement. Condition 35, the parcel must drain, the city drain its facilities, the southern portion of the property currently drains towards the parcel to the east. So that's an improvement there, that that drainage coming down will get into the city facility, not just go to the east to the parcels. So that's one of the conditions as well.
Yes, that will be, to answer your question, yes, that will be improvement to, to direct it to city facilities. I did wanna respond to the public comment regarding stormwater. I, I wanna talk afterwards with you, just so I understand. I was a little confused by, as far as the culverts and all that, what areas you were talking about, because I know there are significant, you know, drainage that does come down through that canyon there. So just wanna make sure I understand the location, and I will speak with you afterwards. I do wanna say that, you know, as far as on Public Works radar, this, this project anticipating, making sure that there's proper BMPs, it is one of the major development projects that's on our radar anytime we are anticipating storms. So I wanna, you know, we will work on that with the contractor as far as proper stormwater protection and erosion control from here on out. And then dust control, you know, there are dust control requirements, and, and I will speak with the contractor as well afterwards and make sure that those are being addressed properly on site.
Thank you.
Just for clarification's sake, I believe when the, the first lady that spoke was talking about the open space or the park, or the amenities that were being developed, is because those were being developed, then the Department of Parks and Recreation took away a, a planned park that was a community park, not a park for the residents of the apartment complex. And I believe that's what her concern was, not that there wasn't going to be any recreational facilities at that unit, but that a planned park was then being taken off the, the plan, if you will. Am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, and I'm happy to talk to Jean after the meeting as well. That's not my understanding. I know at times when Parks and Rec is looking at an apartment complex, they'll say, oh, good, we're glad you're supplying your own recreational facility, so your residents won't be exclusively utilizing the city recreational facilities. I'm not aware that a contemplated park is no longer being contemplated because of this. In fact, I don't believe that to be true, but I'm happy to talk to Jean.
Under Parks' comments, and number eight, I think, is the Parks and Rec's master plan identifies a need for neighborhood park, and the neighborhoods eight and nine, with the project providing a variety of recreational amenities for its residents, development will not be increasing the need for additional recreational amenities in adjacent neighborhoods. Maybe that's what she's questioning?
Right, and it's just a statement, and what he's doing is acknowledging that the residents will have, will have access, if you will, to recreational facilities. There's been no contemplated park that's been not contemplated anymore.
Okay. Commissioner Solano?
I would like to make a motion.
You're ready?
I move to approve SUP-17-035-02, a request to modify SUP-17-035 to allow the expansion of the site to include an adjacent 3.09 acre property, and to increase the number of multifamily apartments from 300 to 370 on a property's split zone general commercial, GC, and multifamily apartment, MFA, based on the ability to make the required findings and the affirmative as stated in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a second from Commissioner S. Line. On the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Just need a couple minutes, just a couple minutes, we'll be done. Staff reports, non-action items?
Good evening. Just, just briefly, to update you on something that came to you previously regarding the sign ordinance for the marijuana facility. So, actually, the Board of Supervisors introduced the ordinance. However, they, they did modify it so that the facilities get no more new signage. Remember, it was proposed that one of them would go to 15 to, 15 to 30 square feet, but no, that was, we're gonna keep, keep the signage the same as it was before, so.
Two sides, 15 max, correct? I believe it was, 15 each, if they had two sides.
15 for frontage, so, no, no change to the standards. 15 for frontage, so, no, no change to the standards. And just a kind of a side note on that, we're gonna be taking, side note, we're gonna be taking, Dan, could, Dan, could you guys?
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hey, on, and on a related note, we're gonna, I'm gonna be taking a discussion item to the board at the direction of one of the supervisors to talk about temporary signs, which kinda, will probably result in something coming to the planning commission in the next couple of months. For the May Planning Commission meeting, we have growth management coming, as I had mentioned before. We have a variance for a, for addition to a house in the historic district, special use permit for billboard renewal, and one of the marijuana retail facilities is, is expanding, and that requires a special use permit as well. My final update is regarding water capacity analysis. The Public Works Department, we just started a process that's gonna take a couple of months to do a long-term water capacity analysis that will relate to, relates more to the master plan than any given project or any given short-term year, but it relates more to the master plan. So, unfortunately, I'm not gonna have that for growth management. But again, growth management is a year out. We're gonna be looking at a water analysis for our, our build-out condition, and so, look for that in the next few months as well. Yep.
Commissioner reports or comments?
I have a quick question about the growth management agenda. I don't remember that meeting from last time, it's so long ago, probably a year ago. Does that include the population projections and stuff?
Yes.
Okay. And then, that will be, that week is Memorial Day. Are we still having, that Monday is Memorial Day? Is that still the same Wednesday?
Yeah, probably is.
Yeah, we wouldn't have changed, right. It would still be the Wednesday, last Wednesday of the month.
So, with, with the growth management agenda item next month, will that have, because when you talked about the annual report a few months back, it was that you would have the updated capacity numbers based on existing zoning. Will that also be part of growth management in terms of acreage and parcels under different zoning districts?
I will have, I will have the, can't, a residential count of numbers and some, and some rough projections next month, yeah. That, that's gonna be fit, that's gonna be plugged into the long-term water capacity analysis, but I can provide those numbers, yeah.
Commissioner S. Line?
Since we're gonna be talking about housing capacity, or growth capacity, I think it would be a good thing to have, to ask the school district and, and the healthcare facilities to, to be here, to talk about their ability to meet those, those housing projections.
And you and I had talked, I believe, the last meeting we had about what was going on with the North Carson O'Reilly's auto parts and all of the unlicensed vehicles parked in their lot. Had you had any opportunity to find out or follow up what that was all about, or are they now a used car lot? Just asking.
I think their cars for repair.
Yeah, this was, it was a code compliance case, and I, the last I heard, they had, where they put them behind the fencing. So, if that's not the case, we'll, we'll go look again. Thanks.
Commissioner Stowell?
Just before, well, we're already into April, and I'm just wondering, over the summertime, could we start digging into accessory dwelling unit proposed ordinance, is discussion, however you want to approach that?
Yes. That's on, that's on the list. That's on the short, that's even on the short-term list of things to do, so we'll bring that back.
Okay. Last chance for public comment again. If there's anyone interested in making a statement at this time. Seeing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. For adjourn.